Call the meeting to order. Ms. Zadra lead us in the pledge, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence. Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Hashef, absent, Guston, Zadra, Sveraza, Dorch, Azzie, Kachal.
Here. Approval of the minute, first we have, before we go for a motion, proclamation declaring September 2011 Hunger Action Month. Then we have presentations, distinguished service award to Neil Cobb. The item D2 will be moved after the consent agenda. And then we'll have public comment before that, and then we'll do item D2. Public hearings at 12:15 Huff Acre in southeast neighborhood. There are no public hearings tonight. There will be a joint meeting of the Reno City Council during this meeting. Chair entertain a motion to approve the agenda? Have a motion second to approve the agenda? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Public comment. James Kazar.
Hello, my name's James Kazar. I'm a Reno resident. I handed out this minarandum here, Community Development Department, and it shows what days they monitored the rodeo, and they only monitored Thursday, the first day, and that was not even the Reno rodeo part. That was the Wild Bull Association bull riding thing. And that was the quietest day of the whole event. And on page two of that, it shows what other days they took readings. They took it Friday morning at 10:00 a.m., Friday morning at 7:00 a.m., and Saturday evening or Sunday morning at 1:00 a.m. And that was the only readings they took. And I still don't have an answer on why Lisa Mann told me to mind my own business, because it's a city deal now, and I still haven't heard why Alex never returned my phone calls or had a meeting with the Reno Rodeo Association. I also would like just to take a minute, as I'd like to be on that board or at least be advised when the meetings for the Virginia Street Bridge will be taking place, so I could be a part of that, or in the audience or even on the board, I don't find. But I'd like to know when that happens.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sam Deney.
Sam Deney, the encyclopedia of Reno government. Sam Deney is an Air Force Academy graduate. Sam spent many years flying fighters and bombers defending our nation against enemies inside of the border and outside of the border. And Sam has been attending city council meetings since 1994, which was just a year or so after his company Pan American World Airways was blown out of business over Lockerbie by supposedly by Gaddafi. And now supposedly Gaddafi's gonna meet his fate, if he hasn't already, and pay for what he did. But it will never make up for the terrible deed that was done to Pan Am, not just all the people who died, but all of the Pan Am workers. Twenty-five thousand workers lost their jobs because of the terrorist attack over Lockerbie. I didn't mean to dwell quite that much on that. I promised you last week that I would find a nickname for our new budget director to go along with the nickname for our city manager, Andrew "The Abracadabber Man" Klinger. Well, I have a nickname for our new budget director, whose name is Robert Chisel. We'll be calling him, and I took a vote on this with all of my friends, and we're gonna be calling him, and the mayor's looking with great apprehension at what's coming down. It's gonna call him Robert. We hope he's gonna sizzle, chisel. So, Robert, we hope he's gonna sizzle, chisel.
That was a 1-0 vote, Sam?
What?
That was a 1-0 vote?
It's a 1-0 vote.
Because you said all your friends voted, so.
This guy. And I haven't even got a nickname for him. Okay, you're next. You're next in line.
You've had a lot of years to do that, sir.
Well, I know, and I never thought about it. What rhymes with IOTC? We could come up with a few things, and it's not what you're thinking. Anyway, I want to give some kudos to Washoe County, sort of a roundabout kudo for myself. Washoe County announced the other day that their technological operation, including the video recording of the meetings and their internet operation, was number one in all of America. Washoe County was the number-one county for technological operations in all of America of counties that size. And I went to the podium, and I thanked them for thanking me for helping them out so much, because when they went to analyze why they were the number-one technological operation, all they ever saw on there was Sam Deney at the public podiums, and that influenced them greatly. That's about all I have to say today. Let's say I have 21 more seconds. I'm way in the back of my mind trying to come up with a nickname. Oh, by the way, in about one week, exactly one week from today, you're gonna hear Sam Deney speaking in the first person.
Having no other public comment cards, I'm gonna close the public comment section. Go to item B.O., cash disbursement. Mr. Dorch or Mr. Guston? Okay. Entertain a motion? Have a motion second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Proclamations today. Ms. Zadra.
Mr. Mayor, this is one that our city can really be proud of. We've got so much support for this desperate need. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States and the state of Nevada and the city of Reno. And the city of Reno is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our city and to provide additional resources that citizens of the city need. And whereas the city of Reno is committed to working with the Food Bank of Northern Nevada in educating people about the role and importance of food banks and addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more services and attention to hunger issues. And whereas more than 153,000 individuals in northern Nevada rely on food provided by the members of the Food Bank of Northern Nevada annually, and Food Bank of Northern Nevada distributed more than 10 million pounds of food in 2010 through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations. And whereas food banks across the country, including the Food Bank of Northern Nevada, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement and efforts to end hunger in their local communities. Now therefore, I for the mayor of Reno, Bob Robert A. Kachal, do hereby proclaim September 11, 2011, as Hunger Action Month in and for the city of Reno of Nevada, and I encourage our citizens to work together to end hunger in our community. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Reno City Council, my name is Doris Phelps, and I am from the Food Bank of Northern Nevada. As the proclamation states, "The month of September brings keen focus to the critical issue of hunger, not only in our community but across the state of Nevada and across America." We do have many activities planned for the month of September, and you're welcome to visit the Food Bank of Northern Nevada website to find out more. One of the things that I would encourage you to attend is the Reno ASIS game tomorrow night. We are working in partnership with U.S. Food Service for a tuna food drive the month of September. We are asking the public to donate tuna. It's a valuable protein item that helps feed many, many people, and our goal is to collect a boatload of tuna, so I'll hope that you will help us in that regard. And thank you for helping us bring attention with your proclamation today. To commemorate Hunger Action Month, I have some orange bracelets for you. Orange is the color of feeding America and the issue of hunger, and we want to engage the community further with this token of appreciation and also awareness for everyone. Thank you.
If you'll give them to the secretary, she'll pass them out later. Thank you. At this time, we're going to the consent agenda. Excuse me. Presentation, excuse me, Mr. Guston, I'm sorry. Mr. Cobb, Mr. Guston, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. They said tomorrow night was tuna night. I'm sorry. I know you didn't.
Well, I never got a tuna in the boat when I'm out fishing for him, so I wouldn't know what a boat looked like.
One's enough. Your boat, one's enough. You know, before I give this award to a gentleman, I'd like to say a couple of things about him. We talk about historic resources and our Historic Resources Commission, how important it is to the city of Reno. This is one of the people that make that commission, or when he was on the commission, so important to everybody here, because he not only walks the walk, he talks the talk. He is absolutely, when it comes to preserving buildings, people, symbols, whatever it is in northern Nevada, you can find Neil Cobb, he's involved in it. I'll tell you one quick story about him. When I first thought I was gonna run for office seven years ago, it was the first time I had met Neil. I had not met him before then. And we had, you might remember, we had a political party on Marsh Avenue. Toughest questions I got were from Neil Cobb, and that's because he cares. He asked me, and he did fluster me, a couple of things he asked me, I kinda went sideways on, but it was because he wanted to know where I stood and what I felt about things. And so, from that day forward, I've always respected Neil Cobb and what he's been able to do. He also, he along with Dave Coliker, you might remember, the restoration of the fountain that is currently in the bus depot, or, excuse me, the train depot, and will be moved to the first floor shortly. It was because of Neil and Dave that they got together, and they were in my face, there's no doubt about that. I mean, they came right after me and said, you know what, we need to find the money to do this. He found the gentleman in Carson City who could restore it, and it's done, and now it's something that people will have for all eternity, because it has been restored to the luster and the glory of before. So, that's why Neil Cobb is so important to this community, and I want to read this proclamation. From Historic Resources Commission, Historic Preservation Award, Distinguished Service in 2011, presented to Neil Cobb in recognition of your dedicated service and exceptional commitment to historic preservation in our community. From the chair, Cindy Ainsworth, and from Mayor Robert A. Kachal. Neil, congratulations and thank you.
I'm not gonna talk nearly as long as Sam. I just wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to be on a commission like the Historical Resources, the city of Reno. This is a dedicated group, and the people that are serving you right now are the same as we were when we were on that particular commission. I'm in hopes that someday Washoe County might even have its counterpart. But you get into history and the love of history, the importance of it. I always tell everyone that's the foundation of any community, is your history. I'm involved with the gentleman that's sitting in the front row and three other people. His name is Eric Moody, and he retired from the Historical Society after serving over 30 years. And he wanted to put together a history magazine. So, we have brought in promotional copies, they're sitting out there on the informational desk. Please take one. These are about Nevada, times, places, people, written by Nevada authors. And again, to the city council, I cannot thank you enough.
Thank you, sir. Okay, before we go to item D2, we're gonna jump by that and go to the consent agenda? Any items on a poll for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, it's been requested I pull item E8 for further discussion. There's some changes that staff wants to make on those.
Okay. Any others?
Move to approve, consent agenda.
Have a motion, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item E8.
Mr. May I ask Terry Zeller to come forward? Terry?
Yes, for the record, Terry Zeller, Park Development Planner. Item E8, in the actual subject of the staff report, under the funding, it talks about the donated funds being from the Junior League of Reno. We need to make a correction in the record that the funds that are being utilized for this bid award are from the CDBG funds. That's it.
Okay, thank you. With that correction, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item E8.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
No, you're right. Thank you. E8 is approved, Mr. Mayor.
All right, yes. Was sidetracked the second there.
Sorry.
Public hearings, item F1, Huff Acre Lane.
Mr. Mayor, we gotta go back to D2?
Excuse me. Yes, we do. Item D2, presentation. Kefory Armstrong. And Mr. Chisel will be up here also.
Good afternoon. Kristen Burgess, shareholder in the Reno office of Kefory Armstrong &amp; Company. I'm here today to present the results of a consulting engagement we had with the city of Reno in connection with the inter-fund transactions, and specifically the violations noted in the city's comprehensive annual financial report for its fiscal year ended June 30, 2010. So, city staff is here today as well that can answer any specific questions beyond what I'm gonna present today, but do please stop me if you do have any questions as I move forward. What we were engaged to do, I thought I'd go over that briefly. We were requested to obtain the city's policies and procedures with respect to its inter-fund transactions, given the statute violations noted in the city's CAFER for fiscal 10. Then we were requested to provide recommendations in connection with those policies and procedures to identify areas of improvement and to also provide the city with some checklists and maybe some assistance in the way of tools to help monitor and make sure compliance with Nevada-revised statutes and in Nevada administrative code. Then we were also requested to obtain and provide to the council supporting documentation related to those inter-fund transactions identified in the city's fiscal 10 CAFER. So, you should have copies of all of that information, our policies and procedures, our recommendations, the checklist that was provided, as well as the support for the violations noted. I just wanted to digress for one minute, because since we've been engaged to provide this consulting engagement, I've actually had several calls from the public and the media trying to gain an understanding of what these violations and inter-fund transactions mean. I haven't commented to date. I'm waiting till we're here now to talk about these items. But I wanted to maybe just spend two, three minutes talking about the statutes themselves and what we're talking about in connection with inter-fund transactions and potential violations under the statutes. So, you're operating primarily with respect to the fiscal 10 violations, three primary violations and statute violations. NRS 354-6118, which is the statute in connection with inter-fund loans. When you make an inter-fund loan, there are certain steps you have to follow in accordance with the statute. Those temporarily, or primarily revolve around short-term loans, and actually the Committee on Local Government Finance recently adopted regulations and addendums to the Nevada Administrative Code to explain concepts of temporary and define temporary inter-fund loans and what you need to do if a temporary inter-fund loan needs to become long-term or a medium-term obligation. Then there are also instances noted in connection with 354-007, which is medium-term obligations, and again, what you need to do to go through to meet the statute requirements when you have medium-term obligations. The last one is in connection with NRS 354-6215, and that's a limitation on the use of reserves or fund balance in funds that are established to insure risks, so yourself-insured, medical, workers' comp, those types of funds. So, let's get back to exactly what we did in connection with the city. As I mentioned earlier, you have a copy of the city's policies and procedures. Our comments are identified in red. I wasn't going to go into great detail, since you have copies available. I thought I would actually just open it up to questions in connection with the policies and procedures themselves and the recommendations that we are making.
One thing that I'd like to, you were not our original auditors, were you?
No, we were not.
It was another agency, and for 10 years, or for the eight years I've been here, eight and a half, we've always turned in a CAFER, and never once did we get one thing from that agency, that other accounting firm, telling us we had violated the law. In fact, we were the ones to turn it in and tell them that we violated the law. How did they want to correct it? And I want to thank you and Kefory Armstrong for what y'all have done to help us unravel this, working with our staff and everything, because it was not y'all that did it before. It was another agency. And I will make a disclosure right now that I do business with Kefory Armstrong, have for 40 years, but they don't pay me, I pay them, so I don't have a conflict of interest.
Yeah, a couple of things. And what I did notice in the CAFER, typically there's a management letter subsequent to the CAFER report. And just following up on the mayor's concern, nothing was identified in that management letter that would say a violation occurred, there were these intergovernmental loan transfers. In fact, it was our old finance director, who was here for a short period of time, who notified that firm that the error had been made. I mean, in the accounting world, I'm not an accountant, doesn't it rise to the level of putting those things in the management letter along with the CAFER? I mean, would that be something that would be brought to light in that management letter?
Sure. The management letter that goes with the city's CAFER is a report on internal controls over compliance in connection with financial reporting. So, it is possible that your prior auditors didn't deem the violations to be internal control type issues. And looking at them, an overall judgment on my part is it appears to be a misunderstanding of the statutes in some instances and in others, not knowing that the ones with respect to the self-insurance funds necessarily existed, maybe a knowledge-type item. Some of them, the workers' comp one, for example, which we can talk about in a minute, that has grown over the last three years. My gut would be that that would be something that would have been brought up, because it appears to me to be an internal control-type item without question.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, I certainly hope we're not using the same firm for our books this year, because I think that's problematic, not to have that in a management letter. To me, is ridiculous. And then my second question is, you do give these exhibits, and I guess what I was looking for from you guys specifically, how did this occur? Because just looking at these things, you've got kind of abstracts of, in this report, journal entries, things like that.
Sure, I can talk about those a little bit, if that would help.
Yeah, I mean, what has been the process that made this occur? Who made the decision, for example, to transfer the amount of money? And again, Mr. Mayor, you alluded to breaking the law. The council did not break the law. I want to make sure that's absolutely clear.
That's right.
There were things here that were never brought to the council's attention, and looking at the resolutions, in fact, what it said in the own resolution that the council approved is it was subject to Department of Taxation's approval in some of these instances, which never occurred. So, which was out of the council's control. But I would like to know specifically from you guys, what that process has been on these intergovernmental transfers, especially those that were not approved by the council through resolution?
Sure. I'll go through some of the information that we've obtained through interviews, and then obviously discussions on the policies and procedures as they're drafted today. And then any maybe specific items, if city staff is here, they could comment on specific violations noted, if that would help you as well. But from my understanding, what typically happens is, and not from my understanding, let's talk about generally accepted accounting principles for a minute. GAAP requires that funds not show negative cash in their financial statements. So, the city operates in a pooled cash environment, meaning each fund has a piece of the pie. And if you pay bills or you need to do cost allocations to internal service funds, if your cash and investments, your piece of the pie goes negative, you've technically borrowed from another fund. And the generally accepted accounting principles, as well as statute, one, GAAP does not allow you to show negative cash. You have to do a journal entry to set up a due-to, due-from, another fund. And then statute, obviously, as we've talked about, there's steps you have to go through to actually borrow that money. So, what was done, from my understanding, is at the end of the year, June 30, a cash report would be printed, and those funds that had negative cash, a journal entry was done to set up a due-to, due-from, and the due-to and from was based on a fund that had cash available.
Okay, I guess my question, because we're talking large sums of funds here, especially all the workers' comp fund. And to me, it's concerning in the sense that when we adopt our budget every year, we say, okay, this is how much cash we have, this is our adopted budget, these are the cuts that we have to make. So, that's what I'm trying to understand from the auditors. I mean, if there was a shortage of cash in one fund, so it seems to me through these exhibits that the money was just, as you're saying, oh, we have a negative balance in here, someone from staff just transferred that money over to make sure it was a positive balance, and then we have a negative, or not a negative balance, but then we have a shortage in the workers' comp fund. So, there weren't, it wasn't brought to the council's attention, hey, we're $8 million short, here's the cuts that you guys have to make in your budget, so we have an adopted budget that's balanced.
Correct. And I think there's different levels of negative cash balances that maybe we could just talk about briefly. Some of these violations are in the world of reimbursement grant funds. So, we all know that the state and the feds typically, once they approve a grant, they say, spend the money, send us your receipts, and we'll pay you back, we'll reimburse you. Well, if you set up a fund, and it starts with no money, and you've got to spend money to get your grant, you're gonna have negative cash until you get those fed monies in. So, there were instances, and that's not uncommon to other local governments, that you will have negative cash or have to borrow from another fund while you're waiting for reimbursement, whether it be 30, 60, 90 days, from the state or the feds. So, there are instances identified here that do relate to reimbursement grants, and that's why that fund went negative. Known revenue sources were definitely coming in, it was just pending, it's a timing difference. But as the statutes read, you still have to go through the hoops, the steps, to identify potential negative cash balances and have the procedures in place, even with respect to grant reimbursement funds. One side note is, the Committee on Local Government Finance did meet, I believe it was last month, to help clarify these new regulations, because I'm sure you can all imagine that this takes a significant amount of work to monitor cash to make sure it doesn't go negative, because we're not just talking at the end of the year, we're talking cash going negative in a fund at any time, even if it's Even if it's for one day, you're technically not in compliance with the statute. So that could take a lot of work to set up public hearing, go through all of the mechanisms that would be necessary to comply with the statutes. So the Committee on Local Government Finance addressed that issue last month, and they have requested Department of Taxation issue a guidance letter to help clarify some of the things local governments can do to not make this as burdensome as it might initially sound. So that's the reimbursement grant-type items. But if you're talking about the other ones, for example, workers' comp?
Mm-hmm. That's the big one. And then the YMCA resolution, there was a pledge in there when council adopted that resolution, that there would be a three-year payback.
Correct.
And so, again, on that resolution, it was approved by council. Subsequently, the Department of Taxation has to approve those loans. So which ones were not even brought to the Department of Taxation's attention? And who technically is responsible for that? I mean, I see the checklist, you guys did very thorough procedures, which I think are great, but how did this happen in the first place?
Sure. I think we'll have to bring city staff up to talk about the YMCA because I think that resolution was 2007. And I believe the reason that it's in the report is because it expired on June 30th of '10. I'm not necessarily sure, city staff here to comment. I believe that actual transaction did follow the appropriate steps. It just had an expiration date as of June 30th, '10, and the balance was still owing.
So, can I follow up on that, though? Because I don't know if you guys had audited other parts, are there others that are out there? Because what happens if it expires within three years? Technically, then, under the statute, you'd have to have staff come back and say, this money is still owing, it doesn't look like that occurred.
Right, you're going to have to go again.
So is that something that we have to be looking at? Is this amount, this 1.7 million, that that's going to have to come back to us for an identified source of repayment on the YMCA?
Do you guys want to talk about where you are on that?
Jill Olson, Finance. That is something we will need to look at and come back to you on, based upon the status of that fund. So that's something that we are working on currently. That's something that the current staff wasn't even aware of as being, we didn't, I didn't even know about this staff report and the three-year pledge, because that happened even prior to me being involved, until I was digging through the documentation. So that's certainly something that we're in the process of working through and making sure that if there's any follow-up, that it be brought back to council and that all of, any follow-up that's appropriate be done with council.
And again, that's my question. How many of these are out there? And it seems to me, I mean, this could be a real problem, 1.7 million here, here and there. Where is that list of, okay, here is, it seems to me, the internal controls here need to really be tightened up. Here's what council adopted, this isn't coming to fruition, we need to come back, we just adopted the budget coming into this fiscal year. Have we gone through the accounts to see if there's anything else that staff's aware of?
Yes, and I think that's where we are now. We have a very good, we have the list now, we know what we need to go through, and we're working now on bringing, doing the follow-up and bringing everything back to council. In fact, we're going to be including four-year consideration based upon the policy documents that taxation brings back, for those items that may have negative cash balances due to timing issues related to grants in particular, perhaps, you know, a blanket policy where you say, okay, for these grant items, if that can be covered by general fund or whatever appropriate fund that might be, those maybe can have approval at the city manager level for those timing differences related to grants. All that will be coming back for council consideration.
Yeah, and then one last question, and I'm not trying to be rude here, but, I mean, everyone in finance, you guys have CPA degrees, the works, I mean, is everyone aware of the state statutes now? I mean, the fact that, this is why we have staff who has financial expertise, I'm sorry, to not be aware of the state statutes regarding interfund loans seems very problematic.
Yes, it does. You know, I agree with you. Robert Chisel, for the record, Finance Director. You know, part of the issue is also the complicated nature that has been created within the financial structure and the accounting structure here at the city. We've almost made it more complicated than it needs to be to be able to track, and it becomes very difficult to track a lot of those cash items, a lot of those transactions because of the sheer number of funds. We're talking about the number of funds and the clearance pattern of those grants. You know, we're looking at trying to combine them into the general fund so that we don't have the problems. And in fact, last fiscal year, a lot of funds were closed, and we're going to look at closing a lot more funds this fiscal year to try to clean up those accounting structures so it is easier to monitor and make sure our grants are in compliance also with the Cash Management Improvement Act, which is a federal requirement on grants, so that our clearance patterns, we don't gain or lose interest on any of our grants, which is another item that I don't think we've actually even scratched the surface on. So we have very good staff, I believe, there's very good staff in the Finance Department, and we are going to work to clear up a lot of these issues and simplify and be more transparent in our dealings. And, you know, later on in this agenda, we're going to talk about a little transparency initiative that's going on. And I think that will also help build confidence, not only with the council, but with the public as to what the financial situation of the city is and where we are.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have right now, Mr. Mayor.
Any other question? Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Mr. Assey.
This actually might be for Mr. Chisel also. On this list here, which was June 30th to 2010, are all these still outstanding with taxation? Or do we, are we able to deal with some of these?
Most of these issues were dealt with. The major issue that is outstanding is the workers' comp fund.
That's N on this one, second page.
Yeah. That is the, there's approximately, you said N, oh, N, I'm sorry, I was looking, yeah, it's actually approximately $6.2 million unfunded at the moment.
And so we dealt with the sanitary sewer, the 3.4 million?
Correct. And that was a medium-term loan. Part of that was, for the city center was approved, and in fact, on this agenda, there's a confirmation from the Department of Taxation's approval of their medium-term loan on the CAC.
And the item C, the 3.25 million? I'm just going to go over some of the bigger ones to see whether they got.
I can talk a little bit about that one.
Okay.
A couple of the other items we noticed, specifically, the due-to, due-froms with the payable fund being the general fund. The general fund had positive cash at the end of fiscal year 10. There's, you'll have in the support from us just a journal entry. We don't have any supporting documentation other than a response that the entry was made for cash balancing purposes. But to know the general fund's cash was positive, it did not have negative cash balances at fiscal 10. So that 3.2 wasn't necessarily required for either a GAAP reporting purpose or in need of a loan at that particular period of time.
So part of what I'm getting to is, this has been, and it should be a big deal for the public, but I want to try to narrow down of which ones were big deals and which ones are solved.
Agreed.
So we can see, because I know that other entities do, had done the same things we had done.
Yes.
But which one, I mean, obviously, this one with the workers' comp.
Workers' comp is your biggest issue. The majority of these, as staff has mentioned, and also in hearing their presentations to the Committee on Local Government Finance and their plans going forward, this one is the one that's going to take some time to remedy.
So what's my second biggest problem?
You do, you do have an amount owing, I believe it's in connection with the, you're waiting for monies to come in on the sale of some property. That might be the Community Assistance Center. CAC.
On the CAC, we have some.
Yeah. So that's going to be a timing issue as well, until that property sells.
And which number is that, was that B?
That will be Community Assistance Center, I think that's L.
Oh.
1.97. L. Million. Yes. Thank you. So those two, I think, are the ones that are going to take some time to resolve.
Any others?
Can I just follow up? Does that include the YMCA loan? Because obviously, that's expired already. Do we need to add that to the list?
YMCA is...
Is that A?
I thought YMCA was A. And that's $185,000 at fiscal 10. Do you guys want to talk about where we are with the YMCA building?
For the record, Jill Olson, we believe that was a $30,000 shortfall that has been resolved or will be resolved this year, this fiscal year. So that should not be an outstanding issue at June 31. Should not be an outstanding issue at June 31.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Guston.
If I may, because we've spent a little time on this. And I was very involved in the YMCA, and that says 3.4 million. I know we raised more than that, but where did that money go? I was unaware until reading this report about, where did, why was that not paid off?
I can't answer that question right here and now, but perhaps I could give you an accounting of the, at the next meeting, perhaps, of the YMCA and the costs and revenues.
Because there's, where's some of the donors that were making $100,000 a year over a couple of years? But anyway, I certainly need an accounting of that, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chair, entertain a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Excuse me, we have a motion, no, Mr. Denae.
Sam Denae, Encyclopedia Reno Government, and I might have suggested that you invite, that you maybe should have invited Andy the Magician Green to come to the meeting today, and he might have been able to answer some of these questions. You know, and I don't want to be a curmudgeon, but here we are, sort of the culmination of not everything, but of many things that Sam Denae advised you about, warned you about, and I'm going all the way back to the Griffin days, when I used that term oxymoron. An internal audit is an oxymoron, and when you have the same people who you hired investigating what you're doing, you don't really get an honest, oh, I shouldn't say honest, you don't really get a good result from that because they have vested interest in telling you what you want to hear. And Mr. Ayatsi said, well, what's the second biggest problem? I would say the second biggest problem, and actually, the biggest problem, well, I hate to say biggest, one of the big problems is the railroad trench. And thank God, Bank of America came and, or those people back in New York kind of helped you out. And I'm not trying to be a curmudgeon, Mr. Mayor, I'm just trying to say, I told you so, in a, and Ms. Sefaraza knows that she had to listen to this year after year after year. Sam coming up here advising you to make believe it's your own money. That would, if you made believe it was your own money, you would be looking at all the, and I'm not talking about the nitpicking stuff, but I'm talking about the big deals. At any rate, I'm hoping this young lady, she's very articulate, she's quick on her feet, really did a good job of explaining and answering the questions up there, and I'm hoping that she and our new budget director over there, I'll maybe hold on, hold on back on his nickname for another couple of weeks before I answer it. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you very much. One thing I'd like to clear up is, we did hire outside auditors to come in, and they didn't do their job, as far as I'm concerned, when they did it. Then we went out and hired Kefory Armstrong to come in, and they did their job, and they're doing it. Our accounting department's the one that turned in the inequities that we had not done. I just made up a new word there. But the problems were pointed out by our staff, and the outside accounting firm didn't do theirs, so when we brought Kefory Armstrong in, we are cleaning it up. And Mr. Chisel and his staff are really working on making it, getting it put together, so we don't run into these problems anymore. And everybody's been working together, and, you know, and as far as the train trench, I used it just like it was my money, Mr. Denae, because not one penny of city money is committed to that. It is room tax, sales tax, and property tax. It's called a revenue bond. It's not guaranteed by the city. It's a redevelopment bond, and it's not ours. If they want to repossess that train trench, they can come get it. Thank you, Mr. Denae.
And Bank of America is in no position to come and get it, and that's the...
Bank of America doesn't have the bond. Thank you. They have another issue.
Right, and I didn't want to nitpick about all of that, but you know, you know the train trench is a problem.
The train trench was not our problem. Everybody did a revenue thing.
Three to four, four to three, you voted in favor of it.
That's right. That's right, we sure did, and I'm glad we did. Because I'll tell you right now, that train trench has helped turn this downtown around. Even though we got problems, it's helped turn it around. And I'm not spinning it, Mr. Denae. Thank you very much. I'll close that section, Ms. Sefaraza.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just on the motion, we're moving to accept the report, but it says for possible action. Are we going to adopt Kefory's recommendations here on our policies and also their compliance checklist? Because I think that would be prudent to do, because I did read through their recommendations, and I think they're good, and I think we should adopt that as part of the motion.
This is Robert Chisel again. We agree and have accepted the recommendations of Kefory Armstrong and actually have implemented the procedures and are implementing their checklist also. So we have agreed to and accept the recommendations.
I want it in the motion, too.
Roger.
Okay.
I have a motion, second, Mr. Assey.
Yeah, on the motion, and of course, I'll accept it, but I'm curious, I don't know if there's going to be more talk after this, is by us not getting the information earlier, it put us into a deeper and deeper hole, particularly on the workers' comp. And I don't know whether we go after errors and omissions insurance, but I think we have something that we can do to try to recoup some of that money from the previous accounting firm. And I think we're still doing work with them. But it bothers me that all of a sudden, no one's responsible.
Yep.
So everyone's doing this, but we're just going to wipe our hands and say, everybody will walk away clean. But that's why these guys pay these large sums of money for errors and omissions insurance, and why we pay them large amounts of money to audit us, to sort of keep us on the straight and narrow. And they didn't do it.
They didn't.
I think that's a huge problem, and it went on for at least three years that we know of. So we should look at that and take a look at that. And the last thing, before Encyclopedia Revisionist History gets done, he never warned us against anything, he usually comes up and says, I'm not speaking for or against anything. You've heard that a million times. So he's never really said he's opposed to anything.
Not true. I got to respond.
No, no.
I spoke in favor of more things than all the citizens added together. But I spoke against the same things, more than all the citizens added together. And I'm not a revisionist, don't you dare say I'm a revisionist. I warned you guys.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Now we will go to public hearing, item F-11. F-1, excuse me. I get confused.
For the record, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received.
All right.
Based on annexation criteria, I move to uphold the recommendation of the planning commission.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F-11.
Bill number 6765, an ordinance annexing to and making part of the city of Reno, certain specifically described territory being one acre of property located on the south side of Halfacre Lane, 1350 Halfacre Lane, 1,155 feet west of its intersection with Panorama Drive, in the LLR 2.5 Large Lot Residential, 2.5 acre zone, Washoe County, Nevada, to give other matters properly relating thereto.
May I refer?
Second. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we go to item F-2, Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, no correspondence was received.
Okay. Having no public comment, bring it back to the table. Chair, entertain a motion for item F-2. F-1, you got a problem?
Yeah, if we can go back and clarify that the language maybe should be based on...
Yeah, if we can go back and clarify that the language maybe should be based on the evaluation of the TEN annexation criteria in the Reno Municipal Code moved for approval requested for annexation by ordinance.
Okay, now make me a motion to do away with your last motion.
So moved.
Yeah, we'll do a motion for reconsideration of both. All right, make a motion to reconsider F-1.
Move to reconsider F-1.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Based on evaluation of the TEN annexation criteria in the City of Reno Municipal Code, I move to approve the requested annexation by ordinance.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F-2. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given. No correspondence was received.
I have no public comment. Bring it back to the table.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask one question?
Southeast neighbor, yes.
Just on the map for staff, I just wanted to clarify, because it's a change in the PUD. Let's see, it was page... 120 in the staff report. Because everything else around it looks like adjacent to it is public facility and NC. Am I reading that wrong? And then this parcel, they want to do a PUD?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, I'm sorry, I don't have the same numbering that you do. Are you referring to...
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to see on the map here if I'm... If you could show it on the overhead.
The parcel, sort of the away from the rest of the cluster, is zoned NC currently. It's been acquired by Pioneer Parkway's holding company. They'd like to have that revert along with these other parcels to the surrounding Pioneer Parkway PUD.
Okay, because the way this reads on what we got, the subject site, you just have these two that are CC, and then this one, which would create a spot zoning essentially. Keep going with your pen, that little parcel that says NC. Everything surrounding is NC, then you'd have that parcel being a PUD.
This is adjacent to the Pioneer Parkway Holding Company PUD.
That PUD is all that space here.
So if you see the tan surrounding it, that's all Pioneer Parkway PUD as it stands now.
Okay, so what would the differences be in the allowed zoning from the PUD?
The allowed uses are substantially the same.
Are the same?
But what this would do would combine it into one entitlement package and have similar design standards for this, consistent with the surrounding PUD.
So bring it into conformity?
It would bring it in conformity with the master plan.
Master plan, okay. I just want to make sure, because it's unclear what we got. Thank you.
You give me a motion. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance F-21.
Bill number 6766, an ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning rezoning 11.54 acre site located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Old Virginia Road and Southern Lane, and includes a non-contiguous parcel located 1,288 feet to the northeast of the intersection of South Virginia Street and Geiger Grade Road from CC Community Commercial to PUD Plan Unit Development Pioneer Parkway Holding Company on 10.54 acres, and from NC Neighborhood Commercial to PUD Plan Unit Development Pioneer Parkway Holding Company on one acre to give other matters properly relating thereto.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. This time we go to resolutions, item H-1.
Resolution number 7620, resolution to augment the budget of the City of Reno, Nevada for the 2011-2012 fiscal year, and improving and approval of budget revisions July 1st, 2011 through August 31st, 2011.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H-2.
Resolution number 7621, resolution of the City Council of the City of Reno, Nevada adopting the Citizens' Participation Plan as required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Motion. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H-3.
Mr. Mayor, the Reno City Attorney's Office would ask that you open and continue this to September 14th, 2011.
Okay.
Sorry, I guess we're changing.
Do you have a change?
Let me know if I need to read the resolution.
Yes, please.
It's resolution number 7622, resolution rescinding resolution 7611, a resolution directing staff to reject applications and/or refuse, or refuse, sorry, to issue building permits for new land uses proposing permanent off premises, advertising displays, billboards regulated by the Reno Municipal Code Title 14, Buildings in Construction, Chapters 14.16 Sign Code, and Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.16 Signs commencing immediately and continuing through the duration of any moratorium ordinances prohibiting the acceptance of applications and/or the issuance of building permits for permanent off premises, average advertising displays, billboards regulated by the Reno Municipal Code Title 14, Buildings in Construction, Chapter 14.16 Sign Code, and Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 14.16 Signs, and matters properly relating thereto.
Yes, ma'am.
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. We're beginning the process of allowing billboards, applications to go forward. At your last meeting, you did the first reading on the new sign ordinance and also on the moratorium ordinance. So this particular resolution is no longer needed, and we are simply going to unwind this at your next meeting if, in fact, you adopt the sign ordinance. So we don't need this any longer.
You don't need this action today?
Oh, we do need the action today to unwind the resolution, because we now have the moratorium ordinance first reading accomplished, and also the first reading of the sign ordinance. And we just inadvertently left this off of the agenda item at your last meeting.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we go to item ordinance, item I-1.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions on this.
Okay.
This, and I don't know who this for, Alex or Jonathan, but...
Is Alex here?
We're on the abandonment of residential property, right?
Correct. For the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney.
So this would allow us... I mean, what happens here is, is this, if the city acquires a residential property, we could then turn it over to a nonprofit to rehabilitate? I guess I'm unclear on what this change would do.
What, this is enabling legislation for the city. What happens is periodically we'll get properties that'll come to the city, like for tax sales that get stricken off, and then we get them free. And if we don't pay the taxes on them, then they can only be used for certain purposes, open space, consistent with NRS Chapter 279B, which is this rehabilitation of abandoned residential property. So we can get a piece of property and then essentially put almost like a DDA on it and turn it over to a developer for like affordable housing purposes, nonprofit, that type of stuff. So that's what this ordinance does, is it provides the ability for the city to take certain properties that come to us via taxes or whatever, and then turn them around and have them be rehabilitated for affordable housing and whatnot. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Do we have any of those properties now, Jonathan?
Right now, I'm only aware of one, and that's why this is coming online, and Jody can speak to that if you'd like to hear about that.
And the Kings Inn...
Use her while you can, make her come up here.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no. Take advantage.
Jody Royal Goodwin, Community Reinvestment Manager, for the record. Right now, there is one property that the city has received through the tax, because it was abandoned, because the taxes hadn't been paid, that there is potential interest in. We haven't gotten to the viability stage of that. But in addition, the ordinance would allow us to do other things, like we're working with the state to potentially buy a property under NSP 3 that could then be conveyed to the, using the same process.
Okay, and so this one apply to commercial buildings like the Kings Inn, for example? It's only residential, huh?
Yeah, correct. It's only for residential. Yeah, the Kings Inn wouldn't be applicable here. In the Kings Inn instance, we were even talking about paying the property tax. If you pay the property tax, or the city pays the property tax, you can use it for any purpose, so there might be some...
So that, I'm assuming they're up to speed then on their property tax, or we would have tried to...
I, there was a communication from the Treasurer's Office about a month and a half ago that it just came out of bankruptcy, and then it was going to go on the roll. And then we requested some additional... We were going to see if we could speed up the process with the Kings Inn to have them get that, start the 60-day or the 90-day period, notice period, and have them get that to us even quicker if possible. But again, I'll have to follow up with the Treasurer, because they haven't gotten back to us at this point.
Yeah, maybe we should get an update on that, Mr. Mayor, because I know that's a building we are all have gotten questions about every year, so, all right.
Mr. Azzi.
What she said is, if we pay the taxes, we can do whatever we want with it?
Correct.
And I'm assuming the one you're talking about is the one at the end of Riverside Drive? Can we still pay the taxes on that?
You can't still pay the tax. We've already received title to it from...
So we'd have to pay the taxes and then receive title?
Yeah.
Now, what happens if more than one entity wants it? Because you said we just have to give it away. We can't charge for it?
For these types of property, you can only use them for open space purposes or purposes consistent with this ordinance, or for like sewer and utility easement type of purposes. So if it fits in one of those, you can do stuff with that.
And before we do it, like on that property, can we parcel it off and save, like save the riverfront access for public use?
That's exactly what staff is looking at right now, in trying to bring some options to the council in terms of...
And so if there's three different people who want to use it for affordable housing?
It would be up to the council to decide.
But there's no money trading, can trade hands. Like, it's not the highest bidder, it's just...
Right. You don't have, you're not under any, A, under any obligation to convey it to anyone to begin with.
But we're not allowed to charge money.
I can look at that, but I...
That's what I sort of, I thought I heard you say. It has to be used for open space or give it up to somebody.
It's generally to be used, I mean, under this ordinance and under this title, it's for rehabilitation for residential. So it's normally a property owner coming to you, and you know, somebody who's disadvantaged, or an affordable housing type of 501(c)(3) that does it. So I can look at that, I just don't know off the top of my head.
Because it's a very, I would think, a very valuable piece of property right there on the river.
Yeah, and again, from what I've seen, staff is really putting it through the analysis to determine what the best and highest use...
And this has nothing to do with anything now, it just gives us the ability in the future to do.
Correct.
But to follow up on Dave's question, if we were to pay the tax, let's say the tax was three grand, can we then turn around and sell it to who we wanted to?
You have to do that at the time that the property comes to the city, so...
No, I understand that. Not on this instance, not on this instance, but in any instance, because like the Good Neighbor Program through Housing Authority, we pay the dollar, the closing cost, we get it, and then we can sell it for full market value, as long as those funds are expended on, I mean, appropriately within the Housing Authority. So it'd be the same question over here, because maybe we should be looking at these things.
Well, it would have been good to know that before we accepted the property.
Yeah.
But if we would have paid a minimal amount of money, we could have made money on the property.
Yeah.
And then, Your Honor, just real quick, the City Attorney's Office put out a memo requesting that the ordinance not amend Title 20, Chapter 20.03, but rather Title 15, Chapter 15.02. And if we could just have the motion reflect that, we're moving it from 20 to 15, we'd appreciate that, so...
Okay. Any other discussion?
At this point, Mr. Mayor, I'll read the ordinance.
Yes, please.
This is bill number 6767, an ordinance amending Title 15 by adding a Section 15.02 entitled Rehabilitation of Abandoned Residential Property to Establish a City Program for the Rehabilitation of Abandoned Residential Properties in the City of Reno pursuant to NRS Chapter 279B and other matters property relating thereto.
Motion.
Move to refer.
With the changes to 15...
The change is 15.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J-2, Public Works.
Good afternoon. Steve Benel, Traffic Engineer, Public Works. As part of RTC's upcoming preventive maintenance program, they're going to be repaving Plumas Street, and as part of that, they want to put in some bike lanes. And in order to do that, we'll need to eliminate some parking along that section of the street. So we're just looking for council direction on that. Also, a little bit on that, too, the parking occupancy along that section, it's the east side of Plumas Street between Urban and Moana. The parking occupancy there is relatively light, is probably, on the counts I've done out there, probably three to 10 vehicles on average that I see out there. Yeah.
Steve, thanks for your observation, and we each got a letter from one of my NAB members that describes her daily routine, which is very similar to mine, accessing that stretch of road probably three to four times a day. And I've been counting the cars as well, and I get an average of about six or seven typically. The question that I asked, and thank you for coming to the NAB, I know that was something that you didn't necessarily have to do, but really appreciate it. The question that I asked at that time is, Steve, in particular, for those condominiums and apartment buildings that are there on the east side, removing this parking from the street, was that included in them meeting their parking requirement for those projects?
From what I understand, there wasn't any requirement for on-street parking.
But for them to be able to have the parking to satisfy the needs of those apartments, whatever, you know, whatever it is, whatever it was for each one of those, did that at any time include the parking that was afforded on the street, or was it all internal parking?
My understanding is no. It wasn't.
And there were a few residents who did it in the NAB who had concerns with it, and they were primarily the ones that live in the single-family homes that are further north on Plumas. And I would want to know that each of those homeowners were individually advised that this action was being considered. Did they each get specific information about it?
Scott Gibson is here, RTC Project Manager for that, and he did do some outreach to the residents along here, so I'll probably turn it over to him to answer that one.
Scott Gibson, RTC Engineering. We did notifications prior to that NAB meeting to all of the residents along the east side and the apartment complexes as well. And I've had discussions with three citizens particularly, and called them specifically ones who responded to those and were interested in the issue, and called them specifically and notified them that this meeting was happening and coming forward, and had discussions with them about the proposal as well. So I did do the outreach associated with that, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Azzi.
It just says in the staff report that you're going to limit parking the east side. That means there are going to be bike lanes on both sides, though, because there's no parking on the west side now. And that only goes up to Urban. How far south do the bike lanes go in Arlington? Do they go to Urban?
The bike lanes, they go to Urban.
On south, on Arlington?
On Arlington.
So the connection would then be for bike riders, if you go to Urban and make that left or right, and that's going to be sort of the bike route that connects the two?
Correct. We were looking at improving the connectivity, because you have Arlington all the way up to Urban, you have bike lanes. Coming across Urban and then taking that down Plumas south, and south of Moana, there's bike lanes. and south of Moana, there's bike lanes on.
And so would that make that, since we're not going to put bike lanes on Urban, would that make that a bike route? Is that going to be signed so people are clear when they get there that it's going to continue, here's how you connect the two? Because we don't want them to go continue on Plumas.
Yeah, yes, we can definitely sign that. But I think our intention would be to get some bike lanes in there if we can, and look at that section too.
As this part, as this road, or sometime in the future?
Sometime in the future.
Right, so from now, it'd be good just to make that connection, so it goes all the way through?
Yes.
Whether it's Urban or...
And we did talk about Urban at the NAB as well, Scott, you probably remember. And I indicated that probably five years ago at least, maybe even six years ago, I was writing the entire community with the Executive Director of RTC. And they advised me at that time that Urban is planned, and then the 2030 plan, or whatever, 2020 plan, that Urban was planned for four lanes, each, you know, two lanes, both east and west. So that would have some potential impact on a bike lane there. Scott, of course, didn't, you know, caught him off guard. But I would want that to be part of the consideration. And even if we stripe it for bicycle lanes before it moves to a potential four-lane east-west movement, that might work as well. There was some concern expressed about that very corner, particularly, the corner I'm talking about would be the southwest corner of the intersection of Urban and Plumas. You have to really come out kind of far, it sort of bulbs a little bit around the golf course, just a really difficult turn to make. It's a very hard 90-degree turn. And then you put bikes and runners in there, and it gets it even more messy.
Definitely, though, we'd have to look at some kind of improvements along that stretch, paving-wise, to try to accommodate any bike lanes that would go in there and making those kind of movements, definitely.
That's not part of the plan today?
That's not part of this plan, no.
Just a point of clarification, under the 2040 plan, Urban is no longer slated to be a four-lane section. There were some, Councilman Iozzi might recall, there were some discussions about, there were some, the model projected traffic count amounts that would have required certain roadways to become four or six lanes that were never realistically, potentially going to be that way. And Urban was one of those, so there's no intention to turn that into a four-lane section at this time. So as you know, there's quite a bit of space in there. If we go back in and do that, that's currently just dirt and parking that could be utilized to do full bike lanes through that area.
That might help with the speeding that's always reported on Urban as well, narrowing that a little bit.
Chair Leonard, any motion?
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Have a motion, have a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J 6, City Manager.
J 4, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, J 4. I should do that one, shouldn't I?
I have a question on this, do we approve private roads? Because I don't think we own that road anymore.
Eric Simonson, Building and Safety Manager. I agree, the road was abandoned, so I think it's just a formality. It's still technically a street, so they're coming to us to ask for renaming of the street.
I guess I'm curious, do we, do we have? I know the Fire Department needs to know if they're going to change the name, but we don't really rename, name private roads, do we? Do they have to come to us?
I'm not sure I have the answer there. I'm not sure that they have to come to us. I think it's a courtesy for the Fire Department, have record.
Do we even have the authority to rename a private road? Exactly. And it's important because the Fire Department needs to know what the name is and all that, and I'm glad they're coming forward. I don't know if we really need to do this, but I'll...
I believe it's a formality, mostly for the Fire Department. Would request for approval of changing the name of Nevin Street to Johns Vargas Court.
If we could, we can name it to some other law firm's court. I know, that's what makes it funny. Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to Item J 6. Go ahead.
For the record, Jill Olson Finance. This is an item, you may recall, in June, you approved a medium-term obligation for the Community Assistance Center. The item went to taxation, and NRS 350.089 requires that the written approval of the Executive Director of Taxation must be recorded in the minutes of the governing board. So this is that action. We did receive the approval of the Executive Director of Taxation. The approval did have two conditions, as outlined in the staff report. If the payment that we're expecting on the moral property in October is not received, then taxation would like the city to go ahead and make a payment in fiscal year 11/12. Council had, as part of the medium-term obligation that was approved, we had committed up to $500,000 in general funds for the future years. Taxation is part of the budget for the city, noticed that we had planned to put stabilization funds aside for 11/12, so they would like the city to obligate a portion of the stabilization funds should the payment from the moral property not come in. The second condition was that the city obligate, or at least commit, any proceeds realized from the sale of the other two properties that have been pledged from this property, pledge those proceeds to this loan. So the property for the Reno Sparks Gospel Mission and for the St. Vincent's site, any sales proceeds be committed to this loan as well. So those were the two conditions that they put on this approval.
Because we had agreed to do those from the get-go, just we never did do them, make that commitment to them.
Absolutely, so they would just like that formalized as part of their condition to their approval of the medium-term obligation.
Mr. Isaac.
So we've not been getting payments from the moral street people?
No, the note included a balloon payment that's due October 21st of this year.
And how much is that?
It's a $440,000 principal payment plus interest, so we're estimating the payment would be about $519,000.
And they've been making all the payments up till then? We just don't think they'll make the balloon payment?
There have been no payments due.
Oh, no payments have been due?
No payments have been due, until now.
So we won't know whether they're going to make it or not until that October?
Right. I believe we have received one phone call. There's been one conversation between Pete Wallace, one staff member, and the lessee, and there's an indication that perhaps the full amount may not be made at that time. So she may come forward with a proposal for council to consider.
And do we have a, I mean, I don't know what it is, but it'd be good to know when she comes forward in October, is what are our, when do we go after foreclosure and all that? How much time do we give someone?
Certainly, we can put together that information for you.
Thank you.
Have a motion, have a second discussion, Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, later on, J 8. And I had met with staff before the meeting, was just curious, and we're determining the allocations, if CDGB funds would be in eligible use for this bond payment since it's the homeless facility?
Well, I'm glad we're getting some workout over today, it's our last day, so...
Jody Royal Goodwin, for the record. It would be, technically, it would be in eligible use. We would have to confer with HUD regarding the payment of a separate? Because what we've got approval for from HUD at this point is to pay a specific bond, so we would have to...
This would be, I understand, another bond. But can staff look into that? Because if we could save general fund expenditures and do this through CDGB allocation, that may free up the general fund some money.
Okay.
Motion, have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J 7.
Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J 8.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah, this is the one I referred to, and staff did a lot of work on this, Mr. Mayor. And I serve as the board member to the Human Services Consortium. And part of the issue, we haven't gotten a commitment from the county to continue on with that board. This is the one where we do all the grant allocations for the nonprofits. And the problem is, with the homeless facility eating up more of those funds and a cut in CDGB funds, really, all that's left over is $45,000. So for three staff people, the posting of the minutes and everything else for $45,000 seems like not an appropriate use of expenditures and staff time, Mr. Mayor. So I think staff's recommendation to pull out of the consortium is a good one. And I think their idea for the $45,000 to help the homeless transition is also a good one. The only issue that I think staff should look at, and I don't know when the timeframe on this is, and our priorities, is the CDGB funds, there's a continuing cut from the federal government, and that's probably going to be the trend coming up. And we have pledged repayment of the bond, part of it for the CAC of $400,000. And so I think all of these recommendations are good, but if you look at the GRO business, the problem is, we've had no interest in the last six months in talking to staff. We've had 50% default on those loans, Mr. Mayor. We may be more prudent allocating those funds to make a double bond payment on the CAC if we can, because we have the CDGB funds pledged, and if they get cut in future years, our ability to make those payments. So I think staff looking into that, if we can reallocate the 310, or is relooking at that RTC site. The best bang for our buck here is, staff says they can look and potentially have eligible uses at that site. It's a blight to the event center and the ballroom. Whether it's save officers, the money could apply if there's some type of public service there. But I think that facility being totally gated looks terrible in our downtown. I think it's a safety issue, it's dark. And so I would just ask if council, before we, before on the GRO, I think the rest should stay, but on the 310 for the GRO, that we look at either putting that towards the bond payment apportion, and also looking at potentially whether these funds could be used to provide services out of the RTC site.
Jody Royal Goodwin, for the record, I just have a point, a request for clarification. Are you looking at reallocating the current year's, the FY 11/12 grow allocation?
Correct.
Any other discussion? Give me a motion with that amendment in.
So yeah, that would be my motion, Jody. Did you need any other direction for finance staff to look at both the bond payment on the previous agenda item and this one for the CAC, and then the RTC site? Realocating the GRO funding?
We're not creating a monster by moving money around to a bond payment, are we?
Mr. Chisel was just telling me that we can pay them early, just like you could pay your mortgage early. So seems to be fine that way, it's just a CDBG question at this point.
Yeah, and we're not authorizing that today, though. That's coming back to us. All we're saying is, we're going to set that 310 aside for now. We're not going to use it in the GRO program. And then we'll come back with what we want to use that money for.
Yeah, and the problem with the GRO, Mr. Mayor, it's very staff-intensive as well. And I mean, we're losing Jody, half of them have defaulted. So what's our best bang for our buck to help the community under those funds?
That's right. Okay, have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J 9. Item J 9.
Didn't want to know, Mr. Mayor, or did want to know, you wanted to say goodbye to Ms. Jody, if this is her last item?
Oh, wait a minute, she's not leaving, is she? Wait a minute, tell Jody to come here. Nobody excused her. Come on over here, Jody. Huh? No, oh no. She hadn't gone all the way over. I'd just like to say while you're here, I thought you were walking out. It has been a great honor and pleasure working with you. You're a very classy lady, you've done a great job for our city, you've dedicated yourself. There's only one thing, Jody, that I'd like to bring up, and I hope that in the future. I remember one time, we were over at the CAC, and I jumped back in my car and I was getting ready to leave. And Ms. McKissick was in the front seat, sitting with me, and two big grillers were about to getting a fight. And you walked over to break it up. In my stupidity, I took my tie off like I was going to come help you. You should not do that to your former employer, because somebody could get hurt, I could. I chastised Ms. McKissick and you both for trying to get me killed. So please, you've done an outstanding job for our city. We're going to miss you, we look forward to working with you. And you've kept us out of trouble with CDBG and everything else that's going on. And that Community Assistance Center, the way it runs and the way it acts and the way it's done has a lot to do with the way you've conducted yourself as one of our city employees. And I want to say thank you very, very much for all of that activity and what you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I really appreciate all that the council has done in supporting us with the CAC, because it definitely is a team effort over there. Fights or no fights.
Any other comments?
Thanks.
Yeah, good luck, good luck to Jody.
Mr. Mayor, I only have one comment.
Yes, sir.
Your statement, I have to take exception to it. I do not believe you jumped back in your car.
Mr. Mayor, we probably should say where she's going. You know, we took a couple from the state, and I think they're trying to get back at us now.
They're getting back at us.
And they're starting to take ours now, Mr. Mayor.
But Mr. Chisel and Mr...
If I were her, I would take this as a great compliment. It took two men to replace you in the trade.
Thank you very much, Jody, you've done an outstanding job. All right. Now we'll go to J 9.
And I knew you were just about to say that, Mr. Mayor. Sorry for jumping in, I knew you were going to do that.
No, no, glad you came on over.
Just at this point, Susan Schlur, for the record. Staff is very aware that currently there are quite a few regional discussions occurring and that the council members themselves serve as liaisons to boards, commissions, committees, et cetera. Because of the open meeting laws, you are very limited to discussing those issues as a council as a whole. And staff was just trying to find some options for you to be able to assist you in having those discussions as a council as a whole on a regular basis, as needed, however you would like to do this. This is obviously just something for your consideration. If you look at the second page of the staff report, there was an example that staff created of what these items might look like, if in fact you would like to pursue this. So again, this was just a city staff opportunity to try to assist you as you are making some very, very important regional decisions. And some of these things are changing very quickly, they're coming up quickly, and wanted to provide some options. If this is an item that's of interest to the council but you don't like these particular options, we can certainly come back to you with something else. So this was more for discussion for the city council.
Second. Great idea.
Great idea.
Motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item K. 1, Boards and Commission Appointment, City of Reno Arts Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appoint Suzanne Vince and Brad Van Wart, and reappoint Michelle Adaway, Arthur Demoglaw, Jim Kidder, and Lisa Cornsy.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ward 3, Southeast Neighborhood.
Yeah, I move to reappoint James Busey, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Identification of any future agenda items. Mr. Assey.
You have a few, Mr. Mayor. One, they were gonna come back to us earlier this year about the special activity permits, and then just the permits in general downtown with the, or I guess everywhere, with the jukeboxes and live entertainment, what's it all math. They're gonna clarify that down, like, see where we are on that. Also, what we just discussed earlier today, what our options are on going after the errors and omissions, insurance policies of some of our auditors. And the last one is to start bringing, to bring back our joint agreement with, to form the Health Department, maybe an update from the people on the Health Department, see where we are with that, and see what our options are in moving forward with RMSA. And I know that you guys have had some subcommittees, but maybe a more formal discussion with the new general manager of the Health Department.
Okay. Any others? Mr. Reston.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would like to take a look. We have, we imposed a gaming moratorium, and we remember the discussion was talking about with the Gaming Control Board about what the outcome was gonna be with Dottie's. That has now been done. I would like to bring that back as soon as possible. So we know now what the, what the rules are, what the gaming board has set down. I wonder, because how much implication it has on existing businesses? Are they gonna be grandfathered in where we know that there are some bars who operate with just a bar and some bar slots with regard to the restaurant and the food service? I think we need to bring that back right away as soon as we can, the moratorium, because we put the moratorium until we knew what was gonna happen with Dottie's, and now we know.
That's right. And we have several places that have restaurants.
Because I would hate to see, I agree with the decision was made, what I've read of it and what I understand of it, but I would hate to see some places that have existed, been good business, small businesses here, where people have run a legitimate bar for whatever it is, and what the implication on them would be in the future.
Okay. Any other items? Liaison reports. Reports on conferences or professional meetings. L. 4, update regarding online checkbook. Ms. President.
Yeah, and this is something, I think Andrew said, you're just gonna give a status of where we are on this, because I think what you did at the state was tremendous on getting that done, and would like to see that happen at the City of Reno as quickly as we can.
Yes, Robert Chisel for the record again. The Finance Department and the Communications and Technology Department have already begun meeting and discussing the, what we're calling Transparent Reno Website. Some of the information that we were gonna look at including is payments and details, similar to what the state webpage is, where you could drill down from department to subdepartment, down to the individual transaction. We're gonna try to keep it as simple as possible so that the public doesn't have to know our financial accounting system to be able to do that. We're also going to be putting financial schedules out there, interim financial schedules, payroll information, revenue ongoing, and our signed contracts would be available also. This is in addition to the, you know, the data we already provide, which is the fiscal year budget, the CAFR, and we do provide some, currently some financial transactions on a quarterly basis, but it's in a PDF, so it's really difficult for somebody to go in and look and say, how much did I, the Parks Department spend on pencils? So we are working on that. We believe we have all the software in-house, so we're not gonna have to buy anything. We're gonna use internal staff to do it. We are looking at approximately January 2012 for the first phase, which is going to be the payables phase. We felt that was the first phase to work on. And then from there, we're gonna work on the contracts, the revenues, and the payroll information, and roll that out after the first phase is done. And so we will, as we go along, we'll continue to keep the council update as where we are. We think this is important also, and we think this will help, you know, build confidence in what we're doing in the Finance Department also.
So how long do you expect for implementation, total implementation?
You know, a lot depends on, you know, it is always gonna be an ongoing implementation. You're always gonna wanna be adding information and, you know, adjusting it. But we figure probably one year total for everything to be up and running on the system. Payables is a large portion of it. The other portion that's gonna be somewhat difficult is the payroll information. It's touchy, because there are certain information in payroll that's confidential, some that is public information, such as, you know, for instance, my wage, but you don't want to mention somebody's garnishments or deductions. So, you know, that is gonna be a little more difficult to try to get. And what we're doing is we're setting up a separate data warehouse, so it will not be tied to the financial system. So, you know, we have security also.
Yeah, and on that one, I don't see how that'd be so hard, because Transparent Nevada has all that information right now, except on the payroll information, with the exception that it does say that the City of Reno doesn't report.
Health.
Health benefits. I don't know why we don't, but.
And that, that's part of the detail, but we were also going to do it real time, well, not real time, but update as payroll goes along. Not, Transparent Nevada does it only, you know, in yearly increments. So we're going to be doing it more frequently on a weekly basis.
All right. Sounds good.
Okay. Motion to accept the report?
Move to accept the report.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L. 5, Ms. President.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Las Vegas, my understanding is Las Vegas has an ethics policy as far as forms about who is applying for projects, business licenses. I would like to really look at their model. I think this is problematic for the city right now, when an applicant comes in, and we have no idea who that applicant is. If, and the onus is on us for disclosure and recusal on matters that appear before the city council, well, we ought to know who those people are, who are submitting and applying for applications in front of this body. And I think right now, we don't have that in place, and we ought to get it in place as soon as possible. And I think there's models already out there where it's required, and so I would like maybe the city attorney's office to pull that ordinance. I believe Henderson has one as well, but my understanding is City of Las Vegas has a pretty in-depth policy and ordinance in place as we speak.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. I contacted Las Vegas last week and have obtained their paperwork. They do a statement of financial interest for property issues. I asked whether they went to the business license level and a little bit broader, because I knew the council member was interested in that, and they said they do not have policies yet. So we will double-check with Henderson, and if you approve it, we'll coordinate with the manager's office. Also, in looking through some of our contracts, our bids, and stuff like that, I already have some of this information.
Yep.
So it will take us a little bit of time to coordinate with the manager's office to review what type of documents this is appropriate in, and what the recommendation would be back to you. But we can get something probably in the next sixty days to you.
So it's financial statement on land use, Tracy?
Yes, it's called a statement of financial interest. And basically, it's a very simple form, and it indicates, does the mayor or any member of city council or planning commission have any financial interest in this or any property with the property owner, the applicant, the property owner, or the applicant's general limit or partners, or an officer of their corporation or limited liability? If they check yes, then additional information is provided.
That's great.
What you're asking for is that to come forward to us so we can look it over and not put it into place now, but just to get that in front of us?
Yeah, I would like to get that in front of us and for council approval, because I think their form is exactly what we need, for them to say whether they have an interest with a member of this body. Or, quite frankly, under ethics, I believe it's appointed officials as well in the disclosure. So we may want to broaden it a little bit for appointed and elected officials. Well, planning, and I believe city manager, you have to do a financial disclosure every year. Those who have to do a financial disclosure with the state. So we may want to look at that, so they're aware of it as well.
Okay, if you're doing that, you should look at also the gaming requirements and stuff like that, gaming control board as far as ethical reporting and stuff, and also all of this. But I'd like to see what, if Henderson has anything, and see what Las Vegas has. Because I don't want to be the, I don't want to be above board, but I don't want to be the toughest place in the world to get a license. Okay? So they'll report back.
So what the motion would be, would be to allow staff to go look at these other cities and bring it back to us? Is that?
I think, I thought they said they were gonna take it to work with the city manager's office and bring something back to us?
Yeah.
It just takes more than two hours of staff.
Yeah, that's, and really, let's, I mean, staff already has Las Vegas, and I'll see if there's others. I've heard, I'll check with the League of Cities and see. I know there's other jurisdictions who have them as well, so.
All right.
So that's my motion.
Okay. Motion, second. Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L. 6, Mr. Dorch.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, we've talked about this since we implemented the two-dollar per-room tax on the downtown properties for improvements to the downtown venues. And just wanted to have that discussion here and see if we can't get the committee started. There's actually, there might be some opportunities coming up in the next few months that, some things we might want to do. We'll know more on what the bowlers are looking at, probably after Labor Day, I think. And we've already talked about some things we might be able to do even for next year with some of the funds that are coming in. So I just thought we'd try to put the committee together and wanted to hear everyone else's thoughts. My thoughts are that we would have a couple members of the council, two, three members of the council, and then a couple members of the downtown properties that are involved on the committee. I don't know, Mayor, you and I have talked about that a little bit. I don't know your thoughts.
Yeah, I think that you need to have at least five different people on there, but you need the support of some of the staff on those, when we're doing these things. So public works or somebody needs to be involved.
Yeah, I think staff will be there to help. I mean, they would, much like they would in any meeting. Any other thoughts? I mean, is five members enough? Is, do you want it seven?
Well, I think five, five members is plenty. We could go as high as seven if you wanted to.
You can start five and always expand it.
That's right. We start at five right now.
And I think, I think if we do go five, I think it should be a majority of council members over majority of us on there. So I think maybe three of us and two. And then my thoughts would be that you'd have the RCBA members on that committee, and the mayor, would be my thoughts.
Would this still be an advisory board?
Everything would have to come back to the council.
It all has to come back.
Council has to approve anything.
Still, I mean, and we still have to have five-sevenths of the council to allocate where those funds are going.
I, I, not according to the latest, latest.
I'd like to discuss that.
Because that's what I want to make sure, based on the memo, because then, to me, the ordinance is null and void then on what we voted for, if that committee's not in place.
Before we get into that, can I ask Jonathan a question, whether it's null and void?
Sure. Go ahead.
I read AB 376, Jonathan, and it said that, and it looks to me like the legislature conferred on us the power to impose the fee, correct?
Correct.
Does it say anywhere in there that it's specifically provided for how we would exercise this power? Whether it had to be a majority vote or a minority vote, or a supermajority?
I don't believe so. Without having it in front of me, I don't believe so.
So when I look at the city charter on section 2.0802, it says, "When power is conferred upon the city council to do and perform anything, and the manner of exercising such power is not specifically provided for," which is what you just told me, "the city council may provide by ordinance the manner and details necessary for the full exercise of such power." So it seemed to me that the, that the, what we passed would be legal even with a two-thirds vote, because of that portion of the, it specifically talks about the legislature giving this power, the way I read it.
One more time on the.
In 2.0802, it says, "When power is conferred upon the city council to do and perform anything," which you just said the legislature conferred upon us, "and the manner of exercising such power is not specifically provided for," which you stated they didn't provide for, "the city council may provide by ordinance the manner and details necessary for the full exercise of such power."
Correct.
So it seemed to me that the, that it passed with that language, that it had to be a two-thirds majority, that that would be a legal ordinance.
Yeah, I don't think there's a question about whether it's, well, I, I'd have to look at my memo again, and I don't know if. The concern is, like, to pass a bond ordinance, you just need a straight majority to do that. So to the extent that you have a two-thirds requirement that you're placing on it now, that's in conflict with the charter in terms of what.
Well, not in conflict with, because, well, this matters to be whether I want to vote for a committee or not. That's why I'm getting to this.
Yeah, me too.
Well, I mean, but my, here's my thought on the committee is, everything, this council's gonna have to approve, whether it's by four of us or five of us, is gonna have to approve whatever goes forward regardless. This committee has no authority.
I'm not sure that fee's even legal, because I voted for it based on what was put on the motion. And now, according to this memo, it may not be legal. So how do we have a legal ordinance that was based on, I voted for it based on certain requirements. It required two-thirds vote of this council, and now essentially we're saying, oh, that requirement's void. So how is it a legal ordinance then?
Why don't we bring it up for reconsideration?
No, nobody said it's void. It's just an opinion. That's why I just want to sort of get, and maybe, well, let's put that on the next agenda to talk about. Because I think you're right. We gotta move forward with this, too. But I want to clear up this, this part of it at the same time.
This doesn't have to be done today. We can put this off. It's not gonna matter if we put this off two weeks. I'm just saying, I don't think the subcommittee, what you guys are talking about, I mean, whatever the subcommittee does, whatever recommendations that subcommittee makes, this council's ultimately gonna have the final say and the ultimate approval.
It's just like we did on the event center and the ballroom.
The commitment we made when we went through this process is that we would include them in the discussions to make recommendations.
Absolutely.
And that's, and that's the process that I'm trying to put in place, is that we have this subcommittee that can get together, they can bring ideas on what they want done. If the subcommittee's okay with it, bring it to the council, and the council has to approve it. That's all I was trying to do.
Yeah, how the council approves is a different story.
Yeah, I mean, whether it's, whether it's four of us or five of us that have to approve it, I mean, we can work through that and come up with that. To me, that's, that's down the road. I don't, I don't think there's any urgency, even on this committee. I don't think we're gonna meet in the next week or two, so. I mean, we're just trying to get the process put in place.
I, my only issue is I'm just not sure the ordinance is legal now, because it was voted on with specific information, and now they're saying.
Let's put it on the next.
Let's just put it on the next agenda, bring it up for reconsideration.
I will do that.
Okay. That'd be one of your items you're gonna put on for the next agenda? Okay.
Not just to see what, just to get to the bottom of this, whether it's two-thirds or not.
Right.
So does, do we want to put this off, too, or do we want to? And is everyone comfortable with five members, three from the council, two from the stakeholders? And then, so next meeting, maybe we can actually appoint, I mean, we could, we could probably appoint the council members now if we wanted. I mean, I like the idea of having the RCBA members and the mayor.
And how are you going to pick the other two? I guess, are they gonna have to apply?
Well, that's, and I haven't, I haven't talked to them yet. I know, I know some of them expressed interest. Ultimately, we have to approve. We don't have the list in front of us on who's interested. But I'd like to get that for the next.
But that's just, I wouldn't even mind if we just let the committee decide who they are. Instead, I don't know if it has to come back to us or not.
So the three council members that are on the committee, is that what you're saying? It doesn't?
I think the three is fine. We can appoint you guys today.
Okay. You okay with that?
Okay.
Make that motion.
Okay, so I would move that we form a subcommittee, and a subcommittee would consist of.
Let me, before you put that last word in there, because of the downtown properties all imposing this on themselves, is two enough to represent, or does it need to be more to represent? to represent? I don't want them outvoting us, don't misunderstand me, but with five, I guess.
I don't think we could have more than three councils.
You can't have more than three councils.
Ultimately, this council is the one, is the one that's going to make the decision on what happens anyway.
Okay, forget it.
So-
Thank you. Go ahead with your motion.
Again, if, if we want to add more of them, I don't, I don't have a problem, because again, it's, it's us that's going to make the final decision.
Start with the five.
Why don't you make a motion for you three, and you come back with recommendations to who else is on the committee?
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yeah, that'll be the motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Good deeds.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and City Manager. I'm Chris Good from the City Manager's Office. I have a few items to bring to your attention this afternoon about good nu- good news and positive events in our community. Men's Health Magazine in June named Reno the number sixth active, most, number sixth most active community in the nation. They looked at things like how much physical activity people undertake, how much, compared to how much cable TV do they watch, compared to how many video games do they purchase in a year? And, and we came up number sixth in the nation, sixth most active community in, in the country. So, a little positive, uh, public notoriety for Reno in that regard. Another positive event that's happening is the Nevada State Bank has established a, a contest, an election, to determine which Nevada public schools will receive a total of $20,000. To get involved in this, you can log on to Nevada State Bank's Facebook page, like them, and that takes you to an election page where there's a drop-down menu listing all public schools in this state. And of course, we in Northern Nevada encourage people to participate, participate in this, and vote for Northern Nevada schools to receive this total of $20,000. It, it comes in three pieces. The first prize, $10,000 will go to the first school, $6,000 to the second, and the third prize is $4,000. So, that's the, the Facebook page for Nevada State Bank. Reno has always been known as a center of entertainment since the beginning of our, of our community. We continue to be a leading light in that regard. Billboard Magazine ought to know, they looked at the hottest clubs in the country, and the Knitting Factory, just half a block away from where we stand right now, is among the 25 hottest clubs in North America, not just the country, but North America. They looked at box, box office data from January through June, clubs all over the continent, and as I say, we came in, in the top 25. So, the Reno Knitting Factory is really out there, getting big names to come into our community. This one takes a special moment. I want to describe what happened. I received a phone call from a, from a prominent business person in town who said that he wanted to remain anonymous. But as you know, there is roadwork going on in all parts of our community right now, including on West Fifth Street. There's construction work going on there now, it's, it's an RTC project. Well, this person walked into a business, a cleaning, a cleaner, dry cleaners, on Fifth Street on a Saturday, and heard the person behind the counter complain that this construction was making it difficult for them to do business, it wasn't apparent to their customers that they were open, it was hard to access their parking lot. So, Monday morning, this person contacted our Public Works Department, and John Flansburgh, the Director of Public Works, responded very quickly, reached out to the RTC, got the problem fixed. This person who called me and wanted to be, wanted to remain anonymous, said he was full of praise for the great work that Reno does, even when it's not even a Reno project. They came in and rearranged the way the construction activity was happening, so that it was easier to get into the business's parking lot, easier to see that the business was open and, and up and running, and the business owner was very grateful for the effort. So, that's an RTC action that, that fixed the problem, but it was motivated by a call from Reno to the RTC. So, we work across agencies to get things done. This business person said, "Your staff is looking out for the businesses and for the community." So, that was wonderful to hear. I would like to just quickly mention the effort across agencies and across departments for the very successful Hot August Nights this year. We feel that it really went off without a hitch this year, very successful, and it's only going to get better going forward. We know that at least 222 employees across different agencies, Reno, Sparks, parole and probation, Washoe County School District Police, the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, the UNRPD, and then our, our own departments, Public Works, the Police Department, Parks Rec and Community Services, the City Manager's Office, and other departments within the city organization, all worked hand-in-hand to make this a real success. And we did some things a little bit differently, as you know, to, to allow that beer garden climate up and down Virginia Street, and we feel that that came off very successfully. We worked with our partners in, in public sector and private sector to make this thing work. One of the things I heard was that, that our police department had some creative thinking and some creative correcting. I liked that phrase. So, it really seemed to be a success, and we look forward to doing that again next year for an even bigger and an even better event. Finally, the last thing I'd like to bring to your attention is a handwritten note that we received thanking our firefighters, and, and you can see it there on the screen. I want to thank you, and, to Chief Muns, "I want to thank you and all of the firemen who fought the brush fire at Sunvilla Estates on July 7th. Their quick response and professional way they do their job is awesome," underlined. They, they have great, I have great regard for the fire department. I, I, I think our, I, I think they don't get thanked enough for the work that they do. I hope you'll pass this on to the firefighters. This is the kind of thing that we do receive from now on, from, from, from time to time, and I do like to bring it to your attention, that our people who are out there working in the community do get recognized by the people they serve, and occasionally, we get a thank you like this, which is very gratifying. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, I, while you're there, just one second, I think one of our colleagues deserves a big thank you for what he's been doing, and that's Councilman Azzi. He's done a lot with Burning Man coming to town, creating a place down on Fourth Street that's created a lot of traffic, it's created a lot of thought what can be done down there when they built the temple. He pushed it. He's got the people along Fourth Street talking about, thinking, oh, well, we can do this, and we can, and he's gotten a very stubborn property owner working with him to rejuvenate an old building, and I think we need to say thank you to Councilman Azzi for what he's done over there and helping with the revitalization of Fourth Street.
You're keeping him from going back up there by continuing to talk like that, you know that.
Well, no, I'm going to let him go here in just a second. All right, any other items today?
Just to follow up on that, I mean, getting just the responses from businesses on, on Burning Man, and truly what an economic boom it's been for a region, and I think that kind of gets lost in the shuffle with all the other events, but these people spend money in our community.
They sure do.
And just, Dave, you've done a great job.
What's great about it is they come here in Washoe County and spend money. We get the taxes, then the events in Persian County would have trouble.
Well, they spend all they can find in Persian County, too. All right, the chair, any other public comment? Having none, I'll open it up to adjournment. Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. This time, we'll go to the redevelopment agency, it's a joint meeting with the Reno City Council. Madam Secretary, call the robe, please.
Hestov, Absolut, Guston, Zadra, Sveraza, Dorch, Azzi, Shell.
Here. Any public comment? Have no public comment, cards, I'll close it with a public comment. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item B one.
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Have a motion, and second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item B two.
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Have a motion, and a second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Any consent items, or any future agenda items? Mr. Hardesty, before you leave, are we going to be getting a report on this tax district down here and stuff to the council, or individually, or what?
Yes, sir. I've got one more presentation with the DIA scheduled for 20 seconds to get your input and everything else in. I'm still working on a couple of more options that I'm still trying to juggle around with, and I'm hoping to get back to you by the end of September.
So, you'll have two or three options for us to look at?[1759.21]